It is four o'clock and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to order on January 23rd, 2024. And Shelley, do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have one, Barbara Dull Ferguson.
Hello, Council. Barbara Dull Ferguson. I live on Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding 3B action taken by Headwaters Groundwater Conservation District with respect to the city's groundwater permit. And I know you're going to be discussing this in executive session. And I just wanted to comment that I really hope that both the city and Headwaters can come to an agreement on how to go forward with a conservation plan that makes sense for everybody. One that takes into account our groundwater supplies, not only our ability to pump, but rather what is the supply down there. And also, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm really hopeful that you can come to an agreement very soon because currently we taxpayers are financing lawyers on the groundwater side, we're financing lawyers on the city side, and we're paying them to fight with each other, which is never a good position to be in. So I'd like you to consider what this is costing and could cost if Headwaters would decide to go into fines. And the fines can be up to $5,000 a day. And I don't know whether they discuss them possibly being retroactive to December 15th or not. But I really hope that we can come to an agreement that water is essential for all of us. It's first and foremost. It comes before everything. If we don't have water, everything else is a moot point. So I'm praying for you guys as you go forward with this and that you can come to a quick agreement. And thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. 2A on our agenda is Heart of the Hills Heritage Center renovations update. And who is going to do this for us? Mr. Hornis.
I will do that for us today, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have several items to get to on the workshop agenda today. And in addition, we have to go into executive session. So we'll try to work our way through this fairly quickly. So always want to have those Kerrville 2050 items in there. Consideration of funding for downtown Heritage Center is obviously something that the board, the EIC, and the community have taken to heart and are in the process of doing so. See this a lot of times when we talk about HHHC. We had a project funding shortfall. And so as a part of the Quality of Life project, the sales tax bonds, HHHC was approved as one of those projects. And so you'll see that portion in there of the updated funding with the addition of the $2 million for from EIC. The projected cost to the building is sitting at, and this is a floating number for sure, but it's $5,304,000. We have a capital reserve for our portion, and HHHC does have $1 million for their startup costs. So we had a couple of challenges. We did have that funding shortfall. We did have during that time kind of a where do we go? How should we proceed? So we proceeded with a 30% schematic design. And as we were working towards that, EIC and City Council were considering the funding for those Quality of Life projects. We received the 30% schematic design. After back and forth between staff and marksmen, and then questions from the tenant from the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center about kind of what it's going to look like, making some changes here and there, we're at this point. But we weren't prepared to bring you a new contract update until the funding was approved through EIC to kind of get all the way to the end there. So at this point, what we're talking to you about today is the second phase of the design. So we got to 30% construction drawings. Marksman is ready. They presented us with a budget for that. And you'll have that in your contracts within the packets. So to get to from 30% schematic design to 100% construction drawings is $225,800. And that's what's before you today to get us from our vague idea to exactly what those construction documents are going to look like. And so once that amendment is executed, it should take them, their schedule says about four months to get to 100% construction documents. And our recommendation is to finalize that design build amendment and to move us forward to those 100% construction documents. And with that, I will turn it over for any questions you all might have.
Council, anybody have any questions?
Notice that we have some members of the-
We do have some members of that committee. Anybody have, you have anything to say?
Angela Kennedy, 547 Fairway Drive, Executive Director of Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. Happy to be here today to announce that we've actually selected the exhibit design firm for this project. It has been something that the architect on the project for the renovation has been asking for us to do for some time. And we're happy to share that we've selected Quattrofoil Associates out of Maryland to serve as the exhibit design firm, which means they will develop, design, fabricate, and install historical exhibits and interactive elements to the interior of the Heritage Center. We are very pleased with the work that we have seen produced by Quattrofoil. Most recently, they completed a project in Lubbock, which is part of the Texas Tech University campus. It is the National Ranching Heritage Center. They have just completed the Cash Family Ranch Life Learning Center. It is a mouthful, but the center is wonderfully completed, executed well, a wonderful environment to engage in learning opportunities for people of all ages. And it is a wonderful example of the work that Quattrofoil could do here in Kerrville. We are excited to connect Quattrofoil with the architect on the renovation project, Fisher Heck, so they can continue and they can start collaborating on the project to ensure that everything will suit our needs and the community's needs moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really actually a very big deal.
Okay.
Just having an empty building does not make a Heritage Center.
Kind of hard to put things around, isn't it? Mr. Rector, Dr. Rector, do you want to say anything?
This is an exciting announcement, and we appreciate your enthusiasm for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from that committee that would like to add a word? Okay, all right. All right. Thank you for that. That's good news. And we'll move to 2B, the Scott Trinder Golf Course renovations update. And Ashley?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Wait for the presentation to be pulled up. All right, next slide, please, Martin. Okay, perfect. So I'm providing an update on the golf course renovation project and staff's recommendation plan to proceed. We also have our golf consultant Mitch Harrell present this evening in addition to several members of our team. So I know we've talked about this at nauseam, but as a quick reminder to the council and anybody that's unfamiliar with this project, we plan to renovate the greens and sand bunkers, remodel one of the course restrooms, address maintenance shop and parking lot maintenance issues, address the netting system improvements, bridge improvements, cart path, and cart area improvements. And the budget for this project was $4 million. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to complete this project in two major construction phases. The first phase would be in 2024, and this would be considered our planning and secondary projects phase. In this phase, we would execute the contract with our consultant True Club Solutions for Phase Two of the scope. And that would include preparing the bid documents and completing the bidding process. We would award the bid in the summer and execute the contracts in preparation of January 2025 construction. We would engage and begin secondary course projects such as building improvements, maintenance area, parking improvements, and cart area improvements. The second phase would be in 2025 and would be considered our course renovation phase. In this phase, we would complete major course renovations, the greens, the sand bunkers, the cart paths, the netting, trees, bridges. And the course would require closure for majority of this time. And that would mean we would close it sometime in January and open it by the end of July or beginning of August, barring any unforeseen delays or issues with weather or construction issues. A closure is required to the extent of the renovations. Projects taking place concurrently in the grow-in period, which is ideally between 90 and 120 days. Next slide, please. So why wait until 2025? Staff sat down with our consultant and took a hard look at this project, everything that entails, all the corresponding factors, and developed this recommendation plan. Waiting until 2025 for the major renovation is the best path forward for several reasons. It provides for better planning, bidding, budgeting, and contractor availability. The 2024 timeline would be very tight, risks rushing, and lack of contractor availability, in addition to a significant revenue shortfall in FY '24 that I will discuss on the next slide. This is a significant project, and we want to do our due diligence. We want to do it right. Golf course renovations are a specialized industry that recommends a lead time of six to eight months for the bid process in advance of starting the project. And most golf contractors already build out their schedules several months in advance. And there's a low probability that we would get a good return on bids if we were to try to bid it this season. This also accounts for the unknowns with the total solar eclipse in April. This project would be near or at the grow-in season, and it could risk damage with traffic associated with the eclipse. We know that people will probably be pulling over on the side of the road. And if they see a green area, that might encourage them to come get on the course. And we don't want that to happen or risk damage to grow-in season with people all over the course. Could happen, it could not, but that's not something that we want to risk. It allows for the better timeline for the grow-in, and it allows the course to remain open for its centennial, which is this year. It also creates a potential for retaining the Heart of the Hills tournament in both years. So if we were to stick with this timeline in 2025, we'd be able to host the heart this year and also open it up and hopefully have the heart be the first major event in 2025 with our new greens. Next slide, please. So financial implications with improvements comes inconvenience. There's no avoiding course closures for this type of work. If we closed the course this year, we would have a revenue shortfall estimated to be in excess of $650,000. Even with a reduction in expenses, we still have a significant shortfall. This would be significant hit to the general fund, creating an unbalanced budget, and we simply don't have the funds to cover that shortfall. If we plan for this project in FY '25, we can budget for the reduced revenues and reduce expenditures to offset some of the revenue loss. Additionally, for this year, we could consider retaining any FY '24 golf revenues over expenses in a reserve account to be used to help offset the revenue shortfalls in FY '25. So that's something that we could look at. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation is to have a consensus of the council for staff to proceed with a recommended project plan as presented, to include addressing the major renovations in FY '25, beginning in January timeframe, and temporarily closing the course to accommodate the project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And we also have our consultant Mitch here as well.
Council, any questions?
Sorry if I missed it. Can you confirm how, what the timeframe is that it'll be closed in 2025?
We're looking for some time in January, perhaps mid-January, to hopefully the end of July, opening in July, early August.
Thank you. And they're asking for consensus. I'll give my two cents. I'm for the recommendation and going with the proposed of doing them until next year, waiting until next year to do the renovations.
I just have a question about the potential for cost increases, a percentage of cost increase by delaying it further. Do you have a handle on that for me?
Yes. So we actually spoke with our consultants about that. And it's possible that there won't be that much of an increase, if at all, because they will have more time for them to bid instead of them rushing and trying to pull off other projects to accommodate ours. So it could work out in our favor.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
I'm excited about it. It's 25 years is a long time to be playing on the same turf out there. And Mr. Harrell, thank you for your leadership and your guidance and your expertise in this and meeting with staff to go over it all. And I think it makes total sense to wait and not take from the bottom of the barrel, so to say, on who's left that hadn't bid jobs for this year. So.
Would any of you who are here for the golf course like to say something?
So we have staff here in support. I will introduce them right quick. To my right is Shane Hefford, and he's one of our Assistant Directors of Parks and Recreation. This is Deidra Flores. She's another one of our Assistant Directors. And then Bobby Morris is our Golf Pro Shop Manager.
I'm glad to see that you'll be able to handle or accommodate Heart of the Hills. I think they bring a lot of money to our town. And that's a great, great golf tournament. So I'm glad to see that you'll be able to do that. So, all right, looks like you have consensus. So that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That moves us to 2C. And this has to do with our fire department and some pumpers. Chief?
Good afternoon. How are you all today? Today, I bring together the fire apparatus replacement plan and funding. We brought this back to you all in October. So a lot of this will be kind of a recap of what we talked about. So the fire apparatus fleet overview, the current fleet consists of four primary pumpers, one reserve pumper, and one aerial platform. You'll notice since then, I kind of changed the language to pumper as per engine, just to be consistent with the purchase agreement. Engines actually go in pumpers. So it's just a kind of a fire department term for that. So the vision is to expand the fleet to six pumpers and one aerial apparatus. This will allow for two response-ready reserve pumpers to provide support during high-volume calls, expanding operations, multiple alarm fires, mutual aid, extended repair times, live fire and driver operating training, driver promotional practices, testing, and other circumstances. The current pumper fleet averages 12 years old. Two of those, two of our SUTFins were purchased in 2019. Two of our other pumpers were in 2007, and we have one from 2004. And we also have a 2015 SUTFIN aerial apparatus. So the cost of the fire pumper has changed significantly over the last years. It was $575,000 in 2018 compared to $950,000 for the same pumper in 2023 that y'all will see tonight. The same vendor had a delivery time of 22 months in 2018 compared to 44 months in 2023. Parts have an extended lead time, causing apparatus to be out of service for extended periods of time, not unusual for four to five weeks waiting on parts. The city's fleet has one reserve fire pumper that is routinely in service while a primary pumper is waiting for parts or maintenance. That is our 2004 apparatus. If we have two pumpers out of service for parts and maintenance, then we have to staff our aerial apparatus for daily fire operations. This reduces our capacity to respond to expanding fire ground operations. And as you have seen around town, that is a much different apparatus to drive than our pumpers. The 2004 reserve pumper is in poor condition. The original emergency lights are discontinued, and we have to locate an aftermarket retrofit lights. And we're having the same issue with our side mirrors also. So our plan that we recommended back in October is the previous replacement plan concept was to staff as a primary unit or a front line for 15 years and then additional 10 years in reserve status before discussing a replacement plan. This was not a sustainable model based on the current cost, service delivery, expectations, and extended production times. So we are currently working as a part of our asset replacement assessment to implement a separate replacement plan for fire apparatus. We recommend and did recommend that the fleet management plan provide a vision to allow for financial planning, maintain our service delivery, and consistent with NFPA standards. That plan would order two pumpers in 2024 that we're bringing to you all tonight and anticipate delivery in 2027. This will replace a 2004 fire pumper and would keep our 2007 fire pumper in the fleet to expand to six pumpers. The future purpose would be one pumper every three years to maintain a 21-year replacement plan. The fleet management will rotate these every 12 to 15 years in a response-ready reserve. So the process that we have gone through, as I mentioned, in October 10th of 2023, we brought together the workshop, a replacement plan, information about our pumper task force, and next steps in choosing a vendor for engine purchase, the funding options that we also had, and then council directed staff to proceed with the tax notes for the funding options. The city, the Fire Department Pumper Task Force comprised of three drivers, Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Boyd. We researched three major vendors in the region. And building a pumper is a little different than any other apparatus in our fleet for the city. So this is built from the ground up. We literally have about 475 different components that they discuss and about a 101-page component list that we have reviewed and gone through. These pumpers are not purchased with a chassis like you would see on an ambulance. These are built from the ground up. The cab is built. Everything is built around it completely at SUTFIN will be the recommendation. The finance department, in conjunction with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel, prepared bid documents and advertising bidding on tax notes. Our local banks were encouraged to bid. We responded to our bidders' questions and received and reviewed five bids. Tonight, on January 23rd, 2024, we are requesting the following council actions. Approval of the ordinance for issuance of $2 million in tax notes. We have received five bids from potential funders. Recommend Webster Bank. There is a seven-year term to align with the engine replacement plan. It is callable in 2029 with a 4.05%, which is estimated 4.19 in October, and the annual payment of $334,266. And we're also requesting the approval, actually, there is some discussion there with the city manager, for approval of the purchase agreement with the Texas Fire Apparatus to purchase two of our SUTFIN G2 pumpers at $950,000 per pumper, $1.9 million in total. The next step with the approval of the ordinance and funding agreement, finance will complete the financing documents for issue of privately placed tax notes, receive our funding in February of 2024, and place the order for the two engines, the two pumpers. That is my presentation for this evening.
Questions?
Questions. And I don't know whether they'll be here or what we bring back at the City Council later. So any questions?
Anybody questions or comments right now? Good. Julie, are you, only if we had questions. Okay.
I do have a question, Mayor. Chief, you're going to get rid of the '04 but keep the '07, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you see any same situations coming up with the '07 like you are with the '04 with lights being out or mirrors? Or, I mean, is there a proactive way you can look at that? I don't want to say warehouse parts for it, but-
Yes, sir. I think the adoption of the fire apparatus replacement plan will fix this down the road because in three years, we would be back in front of council in a request to purchase another pumper. And we will keep that rotation, which will reduce the number of years that are actually in the primary, getting the heavy wear in there, and also in the reserve. Having two of our reserves will significantly reduce that. I do not know what's on the road today, but I know last week, we had a reserve as a primary apparatus out there while we're waiting for some parts to get repaired. So yeah, it's a challenge. It really is. When you talk about a 2004, 20 years old, that you're trying to get parts for. And the last one we went across two weeks ago was our side mirrors that we actually have some sponges in there to keep them from shaking. And they can't order the original parts. So we are working with another one to outfit it. But that's another challenge in itself. So.
Thank you.
My question is, you have worked with this company, you've purchased from this company before, reliable, good to work with.
Great question. Yeah, this is a very reliable company. This is a family-owned company. So they really manage to these smaller departments like Kerrville, as opposed to the larger vendors that San Antonio goes with. So we definitely have that kind of closer relationship with them. We currently have three of their, we have two of their pumpers and their aerial apparatus in our fleet now. We purchased a previous SUTFIN in the past. And when we purchased the other two, we were almost going to go with them. And we would have been 100% through SUTFIN. But the decision made by the task force, and that was a different administration to go with a different one back in '07. And so yeah, we really have a lot of confidence with them. And they build an excellent product that not only meets and exceeds the NFPA standards, but keeps our firefighters safe out there. And it is one of the ones that we are not having issues with getting parts for. The other one was the other company that we're having issues with, and that will be one of our reserves. Question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We are ready for 2D presentation regarding a tree preservation regulation. Drew?
Good evening, Council. I called back in fall. You asked for a workshop for a tree preservation ordinance workshop. We do currently have the guidelines in place, and we're looking to see if we wanted to move towards an ordinance. Next slide. So it is out of the community in placemaking, 4.3, consider a tree preservation ordinance. Next slide. There are several other action items out of the Kerrville 2050 Plan that are tied to tree preservation and landscaping. Community in placemaking 4.1 and parks and open space 2.1. As a part of the landscape ordinance, incorporate and develop a palette of preferred plant materials, including street trees and other plants well-suited for the local climate. C 4.4 and P 4.6, implement a landscape ordinance that provides credit for the preserving of existing desirable trees. Next slide. In our water chapter, 1.1, encourage water conservation through the use of xeriscap and other low irrigation, low-maintenance landscape techniques. P 2.4, create a public education campaign or a display of native flora and fauna. And P 2.5, consider hosting workshops, special events, and giveaways to promote the use of native flora and fauna in local landscapes. Next slide. Again, we do have the tree preservation guidelines that were adopted previously by council. UGRA has a few programs to help facilitate and promote the protection of riparian areas, stormwater quality and mitigation grant program, and a rainwater harvesting rebate program. And we do still maintain the recommended plants for the Kerrville area, which is a list of native and adaptive species for the Kerrville area. Next slide. So looking at different ordinances across the state, kind of boiling it down to two primary options. One, just a tree preservation ordinance. And the second option would be a landscape ordinance that includes tree preservation. Next slide. So through the tree preservation ordinance, it would establish regulations through that ordinance to require tree surveys, requirements for tree replacement and replanting for trees that are removed, define your protected trees, whether they're native or adaptive species, through legacy heritage and historic trees, provide for oak wilt prevention requirements, and define prohibited activities during construction. Next slide. A landscape ordinance would do all of that, plus establish minimum landscaping standards for development. You could encourage or require the recommended plants for the Kerrville area, could possibly include water-wise design, and could implement stormwater low-impact design into a landscape ordinance as well. Next slide. So with the, either way, with the tree preservation, we'll have to establish a permit for the removal of trees, establish requirements for a tree survey, review, and inspections, the tree plan and removal, and planting plan review and inspections. There'll be inspections during construction for new construction projects, landscape plan review through the building permitting process, and then final tree preservation and planting inspection. This would necessitate either additional staff or a contract with a tree specialist. With our current staff, we don't have the capacity or the knowledge and expertise to conduct all of this additional work. Next slide. applicability ranges across the state as far as how these ordinances are implemented. Some cities, all development is required to comply. Other cities, they just limit it to non-residential construction. Some go as far, or include residential development projects for the entire subdivision, but not for individual lots. Any grading and filling or clearing of land, trenching and excavating that may damage trees, or chemical and biological treatments that may affect the trees. Next slide. So our primary focus is getting consensus from council today. If we wanted to move forward with drafting an ordinance, do we want a tree preservation ordinance? Or do we want to include a landscape ordinance in that? And then we can discuss how, what level of applicability do we want to cover, and how detailed we want to go as far as the different types of landscaping requirements.
Okay. So what you're saying is, what you're asking us is, do we want a tree ordinance specifically? Or do we want to include- Or do we wanna include some tree rules in a landscaping ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and a couple of things, when you say credit, what do you mean by that? What does that look like?
There are some ordinances around the state that instead of, if they save a protected tree, they may not be required to add additional landscaping somewhere else. So, they're able to use that existing tree as credit instead of installing, you know, smaller planting beds or turf areas, they get additional credit for keeping those trees.
Okay, and then do you have a specific diameter and stuff of what trees would apply to needing to be?
Not today. We would need to look to see what, you know, more is, what's more akin to our area? Because obviously, trees in Austin, Houston, San Antonio, and Kerrville, different sets of species and different-sized trees. To really focus and make sure it fits Kerrville.
Okay, so, I mean, if I wanna cut down my hackberry tree, I can do it, right?
Right.
Thank you, okay. Drew, would you go back to the landscape, what that entailed?
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
So, your typical landscape ordinance is gonna establish the minimum requirements for landscaping. I've seen some ordinances as simple as a percentage of the property must be landscaped with live plant material. Others obviously can go as far as requiring xeriscaping, combination of hardscape and live material, and then, of course, including tree planting requirements. Stormwater design can come into play there, as well as your landscaping around parking lots. That can help with additional stormwater requirements. So, there's, again, the spectrum of ordinances across the state is very broad. Really wanna get some feedback on what we think fits best for Kerrville.
And would, would this, what we're looking at right here, would that be for both residential and commercial? Or is that yet to be determined?
Yet to be determined. Typically, at this level, it's gonna be for your non-residential. Your residential landscaping is up to the homeowner. There's, I've seen very few cities that have specific requirements for homeowners. The only examples I can think of off the top of my head where a full residential development was given specific criteria because they were in a very sensitive ecological area with aquifer and whatnot. Those are obviously intended to be protective of the aquifer. We don't have nearly the sensitivity here as some other areas of the state.
Yeah, because my concern is, of course, not stepping on private property rights and maybe offering rewards or incentives for protecting trees and kind of going that route as opposed to having an ordinance that says every tree this size must be saved because then you really kind of are stepping on, you know, a landowner's right to do what he wants with his property.
Yeah, I concur with that. I was thinking about that too, and I had the question that the mayor asked. Now, when you talk about, she specifically was asking about the landscaping. If we were talking about tree preservation ordinance alone, are you thinking the same thing, that that would only apply to commercial? Or does that also extend to residential?
It's up to the, excuse me, it would be up to council. Like I said, typically, most of your ordinances are gonna be just non-residential. Some cities extend that into residential development for the developer establishing the subdivision. And then, of course, each lot can build however they need. But as they're going through laying out streets and lots and alleys, making sure they're avoiding your major heritage or historic trees if there are any in that area. Is that your question?
Yes, it does, thank you. I like the incentive route rather than regulations. I think what we could do, and I'm just throwing something out there, so don't take this as a literal example of what I'm thinking. But if a developer were gonna come in and say, hey, I wanna put this type of building here, but we have, the city identifies, well, there are two very ancient trees that our community wants to preserve. Instead of taking those down and putting it there, we will give some type of incentive or we will, again, just throwing stuff out there randomly, waive certain fees for you to move that and have it here instead of putting it where those trees are. I don't know, but something like that where, I know we waive fees for something and we have it here later on in our regular meeting for habitat, for low-income housing, and we'd talk about stuff. I would rather look at some type of incentives of preserving rather than saying you have to do this. Again, it's gonna require more on the city side, too. We're gonna have to either hire more staff or contract out. That's more coming out of our staff, more coming out of the budget. And I think it's gonna be taxing to try to regulate that already with the building regulations that we have. We hear a lot of people complaining about how stringent it is to build in Kerrville. And I'd rather not put another, add another layer of regulations on top of that.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm all for saving every tree we possibly can.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I still think, you know, you get more bees with honey than you do vinegar. And to offer an incentive for them to keep the trees, I think would be a lot more customer-friendly.
I think it'd be more enticing to the builder as well because they wanna come build her in their face with all of these, you must, you must, you must. Or, hey, we're gonna do this for you if you do this. I think it'd be a little bit to Councilman Garcia's point, more enticing, so, yes.
What, are you familiar at all with what some of the enticements might be? I mean, some of the things we mentioned, maybe?
I've seen several different incentives, whether it is, if we have a landscaping ordinance, then obviously, the tree preservation would count towards that. I've seen some that, ordinances that allow staff to reduce the parking requirement based on tree preservation. Setback reductions based on tree location. Obviously, there's a threshold given to staff within a certain percentage. We don't want street buildings out to the very front of the street. But some boundary within there. The incentives, we could get very creative. I've seen some that are fee waivers as well, or credit to other products. Most tree ordinances do have a replacement, a tree replacement plan, too. So, if there is a certain-sized tree that is in the way of the building, we are going to cut it down. They'll remove it, you know, inch per inch on caliper or two-to-one.
Yeah.
And so, they get more choice of what they're putting in rather than just being strong-held to the, keeping that one tree, if that's the case.
You and staff have been studying tree ordinances around the state, maybe even beyond the state. Given the input you've heard tonight, do you think you can find samples or examples of proactive ordinances that would not only preserve trees, but make it, make it where it would be either palatable or profitable for the property owner or the developer to do so?
Yes, I think we can find some examples to.
I mean, I think all of us would rather have carrot than stick, you know?
Right.
But we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
A lot of communities are facing these similar issues, and so, I know you're studying it.
And that's, that's the reason we didn't.
I'm hoping we're giving you feedback.
Yes, and that was the reason we didn't just bring other city ordinances because the spectrum was so broad, we'd be here all day.
Can I go on a different tack then? You are also asking us on direction whether we want a tree preservation ordinance or a landscaping ordinance that includes.
Correct.
And I think a landscaping ordinance that includes tree preservation, as long as it's more carrot than stick, would be very, very interesting to look at.
Okay, Martin, can you?
That's one, that's one council person.
Martin, can you give the slide for next steps? And so, what we'll do is go through, and this one says framework. We'll find some examples of those incentives that combine landscaping and tree preservation, more incentivizing rather than more regulation, bring that back in a future workshop. Once we get that dialed in, then we can draft an ordinance that fits Kerrville specifically and then come back through public hearing process as necessary.
Okay, everybody in agreement with that?
I was looking to stick to more on the tree preservation side, but if majority of the rest of council wants to take a look, I'm open to, because I don't know what it's gonna look like, right? We don't have examples before, so I'm opening, I'm open to considering it. But I was, I'm more of was ready to start something on the tree preservation side and was just looking at that as a minimum. What I do wanna put out there, too, which I think we can all agree on, is that with the, I guess, most recent incident, but just in general, I think we all can agree that we're trying to preserve the nature and culture of our community. We are, just like you have all said, are trying to use the carrot and not the stick in doing it. So, I am, I am open to doing that and definitely for that route. My opinion would be to stick more on the tree preservations, and I think we can have two separate ones, that way they're not tied together, if you will. I think you can get a little bit too far because landscaping and tree preservations are, in my opinion, two very distinct type of issues. And so, if you would, council would be open to considering two separate type of ordinances or regulations. That's what I'd be open to, rather than tying them both together, if that makes sense, so.
I think we should wait, see what you get back. And I think we owe it to the citizens, as well as ourselves, to look at both sides. So, that's what I, that's what I would like to recommend. And then we can make such decisions as to whether we separate or, but we'd ask you to do a lot of homework.
Bring you some examples.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? Do you have a timeline, when you expect to have something for us next time? Just general, I know you don't have to be that specific.
I'd probably be February or March, end of February or beginning of March to get some examples together.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we are ready for two E, exemption from the city's ad valorem property tax for qualifying childcare facilities. We have Texas tax code there. Drew, you're gonna be our spokesman again?
Yes, and next slide, Martin. So, the eighty-eighth legislative session, starting with Senate Bill eleven forty-five, that went through Senate Joint Resolution sixty-four, which eventually became Proposition Two, or constitutional amendment. Next slide. Allows the governing body of a county or municipality to exempt from property taxation all or part of the appraised value of real property used to operate a childcare facility. That percentage was limited to a minimum of fifty percent if the municipality should choose to do a portion of that appraised value of the ad valorem taxes. Next slide. Again, it did require an election since it was a constitutional amendment, and it was approved with almost a sixty-five percent vote. Next slide. So, in Kerrville, we have state-licensed, we have twelve childcare facilities currently. One or two of those are not on exempt properties already. So, most of them are on either church, school, or a nonprofit property. So, there's only one or two that are paying property taxes in Kerrville. I spoke with Katie with the Economic Development Corporation because she's been doing a lot of research on childcare, and the childcare in Kerrville specifically. This obviously is not going to be the magic bullet that solves the problem. It certainly will lend credence to the community to show that it is an important issue and then council would, if council wanted to consider the tax exemption. Next slide. So, if, like I say, if council wanted, we can certainly bring an ordinance back for that tax exemption to help promote what we, the little bit that we can, promote the, any new childcare facilities that were coming in would be able to take advantage of that.
What's the impact? Have we estimated that yet?
The one that I know of, talking with the owner, this last year, they paid roughly twelve thousand dollars in property taxes. That's the entire property tax bill, so city's portion would be roughly a quarter of that. So, I would say, by and large, to the impact of the city would be somewhat minimal to some extent.
And did you say that it's fifty percent of all childcare facilities or of that specific property?
The municipality can elect to exempt all of the ad valorem tax or a portion of it. If you're gonna do a portion of the ad valorem tax, it can be no less than fifty percent. So, we can waive fifty percent of their taxes, or we can waive anywhere from fifty to a hundred percent, whatever we would elect.
Does the legislation allow the county to do something similar, and the school district to do something similar?
County and municipality, I did not see any language for the school district.
We know the county's considering this?
I do not. I think Katie said she's gonna take it to the Economic Development Corporation Board for just support in February, her next board meeting, I believe, is February twelfth. I can certainly work with her and talk with the county and see if there's any consideration there as well.
Drew, you said there's two that are not at a school or a church, is that right?
Two that are not at a school or church. One, I know for sure is a nonprofit. There's one that I'm not entirely sure if they're a nonprofit or not, but.
Any other questions? Comments, council? I appreciate Julie, or Katie, sorry, looking into this and bringing this to our attention. Childcare is so, so important in our community. And it, I think that we, I would, I would hope that we would look at it somehow and do something. And yes, and I think we encourage Katie to take it to the county. And, but if it could make a difference for those who are doing this, I think we should look at it.
Okay. I have another question. So, the bill, the constitutional amendment that was passed gave us the ability to do it. So, we couldn't have done it before, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And you, and the thing, and I believe when I read the bill, too, when I went and voted, it mentioned qualifying, and I can't remember when I looked up what the term qualifying childcare facility. Can you help me understand, is that what that means and is it?
I'm still parsing since the adoption. The original Senate bill had some very specific parameters.
I think the House bill was more general.
The House bill was more general. The joint resolution was also very general.
Right.
As what you saw with the proposition. So, the only language in the proposition was that they are state-licensed, meaning they are six or more kids?
And at a licensed facility.
And at a licensed facility. Not a home daycare, so. I have not been able to track down if the original Senate bill intent with all of the other qualifiers was in place or not.
Okay, I think we're on the same wavelength.
It went into the tax code, so it's all there. And it's, I believe it defines qualifying school or daycare.
So, we're looking at commercial?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, we go ahead and give them permission to draft an ordinance?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Drew. All right, we have the last one. We have a update on our short-term rentals. Yarmul.
Good afternoon. So, he changed that fast on me, but you can go to the next slide, Martin. So, just as a reminder, this is just an update on how we're progressing with the implementation of the short-term rental ordinance. And as a reminder, is just there are certain things that short-term rental owners had to do based on the adopted ordinance. And one was that all short-term rentals that are within the city limits had to attain a permit, the issue through Development Services. And we also established the link of that permit being an annual permit that extends from January first to December thirty-first. And one of the caveats we added in there also was that the permits had to be renewed fifteen days prior to the expiration date of the December thirty-first. Next slide. So, I added this slide in here just for, just as a reminder that if you need information and for all those potential short-term rental owner, operators that want to open up a short-term rental, they can go to our website, curveltx.gov, and look at Development Services, and we have a specific webpage that addresses short-term rentals, and it gives information on the ordinance, the zoning, how to register your short-term rental. And my favorite tool is the Kerrville Short-Term Rental Zone lookup. That tool, put your address in, depending on what you wanna do, and it brings it up right away if it is within a short, within one of the authorized zoning districts. So, I really like that tool. Next slide. So, the process for any new short-term rental is basically an application through my government online. That application is reviewed by Development Services, Code Enforcement specifically, and also Finance Department. They're looking at zoning, and they're looking at if they're paying their hot tax. And if everything is good to go, we issue that permit. And if everything is good to go, we issue that, that permit. Now, on the renewal side, next slide, Martin. On the renewal side, it's a little bit more, but when you look at it, it's actually makes the process a little bit more efficient. First and, first and foremost, what Donna was able to do this year was, she was able to create a notification letter, and that notification letter went out to all short-term rental operators about first part of November, which gave it a little bit more than thirty days prior to that fifteenth day. And so she was able to send it, send the letter out, as well as email the letter, and then she did various follow-ups with individual short-term rental operators as they contacted her, or she just did follow-ups, hey, I hadn't heard from you, and making sure that they were still going to proceed with operations. And then from that standpoint, we went back and reset each individual permit that we did before, because the way MGO works, it closes it out, and if we didn't reset it, it would require each one of those short-term rental operators to actually submit a new application. So rather than do that, we did it on our part, the backend, opened it up, and so that just allowed them to update their application information, whether it's changing operators, changing property management, or whatever it may be. But it gave them an opportunity to update the information, and then from that standpoint, they would submit the application back to us. We review it, make sure they're meeting all the qualifications of the ordinance, issue out an invoice, and issue out the permit. Next slide. So this is where we're at today. We have had ninety-eight short-term rentals renewed. We've had seven new ones come on board, which brings our total to a hundred and five, but we've also had six short-term rentals that have closed. Next slide, questions?
Didn't we have something in the ordinance that said by a certain date, I think it was in June or July, maybe this year, that any short-term rental unit that was operating under a conditional use permit was no longer going to be able to operate?
That is correct. And it was last year's?
Last year's, okay.
Yeah, it was last year.
I'm fine, okay.
July, that they had to-
Right.
...submit a permit.
Okay.
They keep their, they're able to operate under the CUP.
Yes.
Right.
But they're required to get the permit.
Right, and that's so good, following up on that, okay, so perfect. Did everybody who had a CUP renew their permit?
No, we have five, six.
Six.
Five or six, I can't remember the exact number, but we have five or six that we'll be bringing to you to revoke.
That's what I was going to ask next, that has to come through us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that an ordinance?
Um.
Or resolution?
Resolution, yes. It'll be a resolution that comes to you. It has to go through P and Z first.
Right.
And then from there, it goes to bring it to y'all. So right now, plan-wise is that we will have them go to P and Z in March, and then hopefully sometime April, early May, it'd be in front of your, in front of you, in front of you.
Okay, and any time during that process, can an individual try to say, no, I want to continue to operate, they've already, I don't know how to say, but they're out of compliance with our ordinance now, so there's no way they could go back into compliance?
They've completely expired, and so they will have an opportunity to present or discuss their, or I should say plead their case in front of P and Z-
Yeah.
...and go from there, but ultimately, they are expired at this point in time.
I would say they have to have their due process, but at this point, they are expired. Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Overall, it's been a smooth process?
I believe it has been. I asked Donna the other day, and she said it's been very smooth. She's getting very good response from the STR owners. And I also did ask her to check on if we had any complaints, because she hasn't had any complaints, but any complaints through PD, and we haven't had any either.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I, I thought that the, the STRs that were operating, operating under a CUP, I thought that they were grandfathered in prior to this ordinance, you know, with the zoning stuff came into play. Is that not the case?
No, they were grandfathered in, in regards to if they were like an R1, so they were grandfathered in, but they still had to get a permit.
Okay. How many of the ones that have ceased to operate now, how many of those have CUPs?
I believe it's five of those.
Okay.
Five or six, it might be all six of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you speak to the audit process that underwent not too long ago with the STRs? I got a few emails from constituents who received a letter that they were going to be audited, and it was a request from the city through another entity for information regarding their, like their bookings and everything. I, I just want to understand how that process works, and then also, there was a timeline or deadline for them to give information, but I had, I got, received a copy of it, I didn't see anything that they were informed of what happened if they weren't going to provide any of that information, like a penalty. So could you help clarify what went on there and what information we got from that?
Yeah, absolutely. So every year, the city audits hoteliers, we have for years. Avenue Insights and Analytics, that's the company that we use. They also do all of our occupancy tax collection for us. So they, they have an audit team within their firm, and we've been using them for as long as I've been here. So we do this every year. They're randomly selected through our office based on several criteria, length of time it's been, since we've done an audit, what their audit findings were, and other things that we look at with that audit team. And so this was the first year that we actually did short-term rentals, and that is because they're part of the ordinance now, and our ordinance outlines that an audit will be taking place. We actually have a follow-up meeting with that audit team next week. Hoteliers have been completed, there was some extensions on some short-term rentals that we provided, since this was the first time that any of them had been through that process before. So we gave them a little bit of latitude on timeframe and collecting data. So we're kind of looking at it as an education tool this year when it comes to short-term rentals, and we don't, I don't have those findings right now. I know they were, there were some education pieces as we went through that, some things that they were either collecting taxes on that they didn't have to, or things they weren't collecting taxes on that they should be, and so that's what we use that firm as well to do some education with them. So we do have some follow-ups scheduled, and so we should have some results on that soon.
And I did relay a lot of that information to, I don't know if it was at that time, city manager, Hoppy, or maybe it was you two directly, but we did give some information to the citizens, so that was helpful. I was just looking to see, because it was my understanding that the whole process was to make sure that, just like with hotels, they aren't in compliance with the hot tax.
That's exactly right. And if anyone has any questions, they can call our office. I work on those, Jacob works on those, so we can, we can walk through any of that stuff with them, and we've even gone on-site to hotels before and helped them through different questions that they had related to different hot audit pieces, or what they should and shouldn't, because they have to do the same thing with us they do with the state.
Thank you for that.
Yep, of course.
How many of the STRs that are currently operating are, are operating under CUP? I mean, what I'm trying to gauge is, you know, we're, we're kind of filtering out a little at a time the ones that are on CUPs versus the ones that are in, in zones that allow for the use. So I just was curious, how many are actually operating under a CUP?
I'd have to get you the exact number, because I, I don't recall, but I want to say it's about fifty.
Okay, so about half.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure, yeah.
About half of them, okay, that's all I needed.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Good to hear that it is going well. Thank your staff for all that they're doing for this, and we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, well, I'll let Donna know, because she's the one that does it all.
Okay, please do. Yarmul. Please do. Thank you, Yarmul. Okay, council, we are ready for executive session. And I will make a motion that we go into executive session under five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, And I think, does that cover all of them?
That's it, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved, and at four-fifty-eight, we will recess from the regular workshop and go into executive session.